I want to thank all of you that are staying. Please be seated and we'll start our meeting. As in the past, you will be hearing what has been happening in the church for the past three months. We will be hearing from our focus groups as well as from other people that have been asked to visit with you. So as we go through our meeting, I call you into prayer. Thank you for staying for our Congregational Town Meeting today. As in the past, you will hear from the focus groups and other people, and we ask that God listens and that you listen to what is happening. Following the updates, then we will also have time for questions. So our first speaker today in our town meeting is Dave Bean, and he will come up and talk about the endowment fund.
From the Endowment Memorial Committee, we have dispersed $1,840. We have dispersed $1,840 from the Memorial Committee this year. We will be using memorial money also to help with the security system. Endowment funds have been used for the carpet, which we've already put in, and we are also discussing other projects that can be used for the ministry, mission, and vision of Hope Church. We want you to look forward to a letter that will be coming from this committee with more information of how you can be involved in this. And if you have any questions, why be sure and speak to any of the members on the committee. That'd be Joy and Nev and Glenn, Kristen, myself, Kathy Baker, and Pastor Danny.
Before we move into the focus groups from the leadership team, I wanted to bring you up to date on where the community is with the Ukrainian projects. And I also want you to understand, this is not just church-related. It is community-related. We happen to be working with people from various churches, but it is community-related. We are expanding to as many people as possible. We do have a family coming. It is a family of six, a mom, a dad, and a grandma, and three children. And they will be placed in the home of Scott, and I can't think of his wife's name, Swift, of Swift Greenhouse, and they will be living in the farmhouse out there, close to Laurel. So there will be some transportation issues, although I have a car that I have graciously said can be used. It sits in my back garage, so it might as well be used. We don't know exactly the date of arrival, but people have been communicating with them. They're very, very excited about coming. So it's a matter now of raising funds for the transportation to get them here. They are right now living in Cologne, Germany. As you heard from Lois, Lois has been approved to have at least one, if not a couple, to live and share her condo out at Glenwood, which is wonderful. But now we're into the steps. And I will be contacting our tech person to help us fill out the initial form, so that then Lois will be able to meet people, be able to decide who she feels comfortable having come in and live with her, and then we'll proceed with transportation if necessary, whatever. I will be having an egress window put in my house mid-October, which then opens up my basement, which is a house for a family. So Les and I are looking at a mom and two children, or a couple with no more than two children. But once we get the egress window, we have two bedrooms, if not a third, that we could make available if need be. So progress is being made. I want you to rejoice in that in the community. We have a couple here at church who will be donating furniture. The Hebron Temple has donated food, which is stored in a room here at church. There was a man Wednesday night that said, hey, we've got furniture. It's in the storage. So as these things begin to happen, please let us know, because we have possible furniture. So community is working to make this become a reality. So praise the Lord for that. Okay, we'll move into our focus groups, and we'll start with Joyce.
We've been publishing where we stand on our general budgets, and so I'm just going to actually reiterate what we've been putting out. So in January, we finished with a positive balance, the end of January. Since then, we finished with a positive balance in May and a positive balance in July. However, all those other months were negative balances, and we are currently $8,350 in the red on our general budget. I've stated before that we have a reserve fund that I'm able to keep paying the bills, so the lights are still on, the water's still running. But we need to try to make that up by the end of the year. So I just want everybody to pay attention to their giving, you know, where they're at, if they're caught up. We do have two ways to give automatically every month, if you'd like. One is you can set that up through Vanco, which is on our web, there's a button on our website, and that's something we pay every month to have that. It's not used much. I'd like to see that used more. You can do a one-time donation, and you get to specify where you want that donation to go. The other option is through a bank, through the bank. Our bank, Farmer Savings Bank, can do a draw from your account. I have a form that you'd fill out, and we take that up. Again, you get to specify where that money goes, where you want it to be applied to. So if you are interested in that, let me know. Then you don't have to go, oops, I forgot to write a check last month, because it's all taken care of for you. So if anyone has any questions or wants to see this sheet, I made some copies. If anyone wants one, come and see me. If you have any others, more specific questions, I'm always open to phone calls and emails.
Trustees, is there anything else that you would like to talk about? Flip a coin?
Just as far as recent stuff, the carpet, as Ben's mentioned, in the hallway and in the offices, and we painted that hallway and all the offices over there as well, and that looks great. The HVAC stuff is the other big thing, like we mentioned, that is going on right now. We've got some repairs that have been done on some, but like I said, one is getting replaced here, because it was non-reparable, and we've got quite a few that are at that same age. So it's going to be something we're going to be dealing with for continued.
Sigourney, I'll call on you. Sigourney has a couple of reports.
The first topic I'm going to talk about is under the Grow Focus area, and that has to do with learning and Sunday School and stuff like that. So I've got a list of things here. Here's my first one. It's a success story, Vacation Bible School. This was a joint effort with ELM, and it was held in July, July 11th through the 14th, and it was in the evening. We wanted kids and adults, and we didn't get many adults other than the helpers. So next year, when we do this again, we're going to emphasize that more. Lois didn't stay for the meeting. She was there for...
She moved.
She moved.
Yeah, but she did.
Okay. So Lois was here for Vacation Bible School, and she said it was a great time. They had good lessons for adults. She got to meet new people. And Lois is encouraging you to consider Vacation Bible School next summer, when we have it again. Next thing I want to talk about is the little Bible stories that I record and post online. It used to be just Facebook. We post a new story every Thursday about 4:00. And a month or two ago, Cole got a wonderful idea, thank you, Cole, to post it on YouTube. And oh my goodness, we went from about 20 views a week to, get this, 347 of one story in one week. And, you know, I looked at what story that was. It wasn't anything out of the ordinary, I didn't think. But anyway, we had 347, 235, and then there are more modest numbers, 71, 56, and 66. But still, that's double what we had before. So it looks a little different when you see it on Facebook, because now it's a link to YouTube, but wow. What an outreach. You know that all of those 347 people aren't Hope people, are they? We're reaching out. We're reaching out to folks. Okay, next one. Sunday School. The children of our church got this little flyer in the mail this week. Did it come this week, Ava, or last week? Last week. Reminding them that Sunday School starts September 18th. And for the younger children, we're dividing them into two groups this year. The little kids will be downstairs with me, that's preschool through second grade, and then the third through sixth graders will be upstairs with Linda and Janine. And the third graders are going to get new Bibles on September 18th, and Linda is going to spend some time with them, teaching them how to use their Bibles that day, and I don't know how many weeks she's going to use for that, but they'll get to learn to use their Bibles. This is the room that used to be called the Seekers. And we don't know if those kids want to be the Seekers, or if they want to be something else. We'll let them choose. They'll get to choose the name for their little group, and that's third through sixth graders. Now, my next thing on my list is youth group that will also start that day, September 18th. This will be in the evening for grades seven through 12, and it'll be a joint effort again with ELM. And Pastor Danny is leading that, and Linda and Eric are going to be leading the youth group, and their first meeting is that Sunday night on September 18th. So we're hoping for big things of this new youth group. Next on my list is Confirmation. That's going to start in October, grades seven and up, I think, Danny, is that right? Grades seven and up. They'll start sometime in October, and the goal is to have Confirmation on Easter Sunday. Something different, something cool. All right. Now, speaking of something really different, this is something brand-new, and there'll be more publicity on this, but I want to tell you, you're the first to hear about this, Bible Study for Busy Lives. One of the suggestions that came out of our small-group ideas was someone asked for a Bible study during the week, in the afternoons. So this will happen on a Tuesday. The first one will be Tuesday, October 4th. We're actually going to offer two sessions, one at 12:30 for your afternoon people, and one at 6:30 for people who would rather have an evening session. It'll be the same material both times. It's called Bible Study for Busy Lives, because there's not a lot of reading that a person needs to do to prepare for this. You read a few chapters every day, then come, and we'll discuss them here at the church. Starts October 4th, and you'll get more information later. We're going to put an article in the newspaper about this too, because we're going to invite the whole community, anybody who's interested in an overview study of the Bible and is interested in Bible study for busy lives. That's it for that report. Do you want me to go ahead? Okay. All right. Now, I'm switching gears here. This is a report on behalf of Kathy Baker, who is in charge of the SERVE Focus Group. That's mission-type stuff. So this is from some notes that Kathy sent me in an email, so that her report could be given today. She says, "The CARES projects have been very successful. Thank you for your support. We offer these opportunities to be in mission with our community and encourage you to support those projects that are near to your heart, or you are called to support." And Pastor Danny blessed the items that had been given for the school nurse project. My understanding is we're going to be storing this stuff here at the church, and then we'll give it to the nurses when they ask for it. Number two, summer fun events have been well-attended. This last one that we had, our Neighborhood Picnic, there were about 70 people here, and half of those people were people we had not seen before. It was wonderful. The neighborhood people showed up. And our plan is to have future events where the neighborhood will show up. Speaking of the neighborhood, oh, wait. Trying to decide whether to go... No, okay. I better stay on the order that Kathy gave me, these notes, or I'll get lost. Here's what's coming up this fall. Tailgate Party, Saturday, September 10th. Told you about that during worship. Iowa-Iowa State Football Game. And bring a non-perishable food item and put it in the box to support the team that you want to support. And we'll put the food in the food pantry. Okay, October. Sunday, October 30th at 6:00. Costume Party, chili supper, trick-or-treat time. We're going to invite the neighborhood. We're going to have a good time. November. Wednesday, November 16th, 5:30 Thanksgiving Dinner in Fellowship Hall. And we're going to work out the details on that later. December. Sunday, December 18th, 6:30 Cookie Decorating. Now, there is a twist to this, and we thank Pastor Danny for this idea. Going to decorate the cookies on December 18th, and then on Christmas Eve, we'll be delivering these cookies to people who have to work on Christmas Eve. Think about convenience store workers, they don't get Christmas Eve off. The emergency room folks, if urgent care is open, those sorts of things. They'll get cookies from us on Christmas Eve after worship. And the final thing on Kathy's list is, don't forget to vote to choose our next international missionary by putting a bead in the bucket.
So just a reminder, as you know from SPRC, we were fortunate enough to secure Jenny Van Gundy to be our Worship Arts Coordinator. So other than that, that is our reports from the focus groups. So Danny, you're up.
Well, I've been here 59 days, I guess, and I wanted to share a little bit with you. So I don't know, I've been to most of the meetings that were just discussed with refugees and cookie decorating and everything in between. So I've been very busy. One thing I have been doing too is going to your homes, and that has been a lot of fun. I've been to eight gatherings, or nine? No, eight. I don't know. I lost track. But it's been a wonderful chance for me to come to your home, to meet people or some of your neighbors, and you get to ask me whatever question you want, I guess. And we've had some fun. We've had some fun doing that. So if you want to do that, you know, if you want to host one and you haven't yet, I'm still interested in going to coffee and getting to know you and having fun. So other things that I've been working on, you know, in July, we had two funerals that we celebrated two wonderful people. That was Mary Alice and Lauren. And then with worship planning, every week, hopefully you've come and had fun on Sunday mornings, like Elena. And on Wednesday nights, I've also been hosting just a very brief worship service from 6:00 to 6:30. We pray, we sing some songs together, and we ask questions. It's very similar to a Bible study where we're in discussion, but it's also a time to share our own reflections and to dig deeper into God's Word. We're going to be expanding that, though, starting September 21st. That's a Wednesday. So instead of just having worship here from 6:00 to 6:30, we will have dinner from 5:30 to 6:00, and then we will transition into that, a very similar laid-back worship service from 6:00 to 6:30. So you could be here for an hour from 5:30 to 6:30, be fed physically and spiritually. And we're going to call that, instead of POW, which is Pathways on Wednesdays, thank you. Instead of calling it that, we're going to call it Food for the Soul. So Food for the Soul, you come and eat dinner with us at 5:30 and then stay for worship at 6:00. We'll start that on September 21st, but we're still doing Wednesday night worship from 6:00 to 6:30 now. So we'd love to have you there. And our hope is, we have a lot of hopes for that, Food for the Soul, but one hope is that it just extends the time that kids are already here from wonderful Wednesdays, which will start again in October. So they'll be here from 3:30 to 5:30, and then we'll invite them to stay for dinner and worship as well. The last thing I wanted to mention, and then we'll have time for questions, is that the leadership team, and we met an additional time earlier this month, and we had our District Superintendent, Ron Carlson, here. He led us in a discussion around what we call a MAP, and it looks something like this. I don't know if we've already... Okay, we haven't made this available yet, because we still have one more... Oh, go ahead, Sigourney. Okay, we put information about this, which is called a MAP. It's a Ministry Action Plan. We worked on this for a couple hours with our District Superintendent, and all this is a way for us to organize our church goals, our missional priorities, and for us to come up with very specific ways and very specific goals for us to meet. So I want to tell you the five missional goals, our missional expectations of this church, and then you can ask questions, or you can wait until this will be... We haven't, we're still in the draft period, because we haven't finished one of our missional expectations. But you can also wait to read more about it coming up in a couple weeks, or in the next month. Our first missional expectation of this church is to reach out to the people outside the congregation. Our second is to develop a family ministry for children, youth, and young families. Hopefully, you've already heard ways that we're trying to achieve these goals since the other reports that you've heard. Our third missional expectation is to develop lay leadership. Our fourth is to develop a small group, or to develop small group ministries for spiritual growth and fellowship. And our fifth is to create an alternative worship service. So you've, again, hopefully you've heard some of the ways that we're trying to reach these larger goals, but we have smaller goals within each one, and our District Superintendent has asked us to create this so that we can report to our Charge Conference meeting that'll be next month, or no, in October, which is basically next month. Any questions that you have for me or for anyone who's shared today? Something you wanted to hear about that you didn't? Yeah, Carolyn. What is going to happen with the choir? Jenny would be the best person to ask for that, and she's not here right now. So Sigourney might have an answer. Yeah, come on up. Sigourney has a better answer than me, which is, I don't know.
I'll share as much as I know about the choir. Our first rehearsal will be this Wednesday at 6:45. I think Jenny is planning that we will rehearse every Wednesday at 6:45. The choir will sing the first and third Sundays of the month. A women's group will sing on the second Sunday of the month. A men's group will sing on the fourth Sunday of the month. And in a month with five Sundays, there will be some sort of special music on that fifth Sunday. Might be the little kids with the bells, with some help from their grown-ups, or it might be some other kind of special music. But every Wednesday, 6:45, and then choir sings the first and third Sundays. We are waiting to gather the chimes groups together until we know how many people we're going to have, but it won't be until later this fall before we'll start the chimes.
So if you want to play, let us know.
Yeah, if you're interested in chimes, let us know, because, you know, with chimes, you've got to have enough hands to cover all those notes. And last year, we tried to play three octaves, and there are eight notes in an octave, so that's 24 notes. So I got two hands. That means I need 12 people. Did we have 12 people? No. Did you see us scrambling to pick up one and put one down? Yes. Was it stressful? Yes. So Jenny has some ideas of how we might handle that, depending on how many people show up, and it won't be as stressful as it was last year. Any other questions about the choir or about music?
The one other thing about chimes, potentially, maybe you said this, Sigourney, is that an idea has been brought up that may, rather than having it, you know, come be in chimes forever, instead, it's like, come be a part of chimes for the season of Advent, which is four weeks, or the season of Lent. So doing it perhaps by season might help with our commitment. That's the hope. Other questions you have about choir or anything? Okay.
Just a couple of reminders. You've heard about September 10th. Our next leadership team meeting is Sunday, October the 2nd, at 3:00 in the Rainbow Room. We're going to try the new time. We don't want to interfere with youth groups, so we're going to try it, see if it works, and we'll go from there. And then the next time you will hear about church activities would be our Charge Conference, which is Sunday, October 16th, and it's at First Church downtown at 1:00. So those are our events. Again, I thank you for coming to the Town Hall Meeting. We want to keep you informed, but between them, if you've got questions, you know who your team is. It doesn't matter what the issue might be. Talk with one of us, and we'll find out the answer. We want to encourage more of the activities like Barb Green planned. The team doesn't do it all, you guys. That's not the idea behind the leadership team. If you've got an idea, present it to the team. We will say, go with it, and then you take on that responsibility of getting it planned. And it's not that difficult. You just have to be willing to step out and know that God is going to be with you when you do that. Sigourney mentioned one Bible study. I'm going to lead a Bible study on a book called, If God Is Love, Don't Be a Jerk. So the book can be purchased on Amazon, and I'm not too sure. I need to go down and really look at the books that are... look at the books that are carried down at Stepping Stone, because she may have it down there, too. But it can be purchased, or I am willing to go online and purchase it for you. It will be Wednesdays at 9:30, and you're going to ask me the start date?
September 14th.
Thank you. September 14th. I knew somebody would know that. So, you know, take advantage of some of these small-group things, you know, praying our goodbyes, prayer questers. We have groups established, but be willing to establish another group. We have so many people with so many interests. All we have to do is be brave and take that first step. Another thing I want to kind of step into, and then I promise I'll send you home. The adult Sunday School class will be studying the book, Just Mercy. It's written by Bryan Stevenson. He is a civil rights lawyer, who really concentrates on those people who have been wrongly incarcerated. So it's a pretty stimulating book. It will, I mean, can you imagine our church not discussing something like that? So I encourage you to come to adult Sunday School, and that will start the 18th, just like the rest of Sunday School is starting. So, another opportunity for a book study. Any other questions, or comments?
The first question is, does it fall on Tuesday morning?
Okay. Otto just stated that the prayer questers meet out at the Village at 9:30 on Tuesdays, and there is somebody to open the door for you. So you're welcome to attend that. Again, I thank you. God walks with this church every day. Thanks.